Your comments are well taken. Any commissioners have a report today that they'd like to make?
Madam Chair, comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I've noticed that since we've gone to non-restrictive seating in this, our numbers have gone down. Maybe we should go back to that so we get a higher audience count.
Perhaps.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to give you an update from the NACO conference that I just got back from.
He's, he did ask for an additional five minutes. We'll see what he's got to say.
I'm going to start by showing you how benevolent I am to all my fellow commissioners as I brought you back. A token of what you can add to your, there you go Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thanks Jim. What would I do without a pair of Argyle NACO socks?
Hey, they were five bucks a throw. What are you talking about?
Oh, awesome.
The other thing that I brought back was I just wanted to, I thought the sheriff would be here this morning. NACO is working hard on, still on the opioid crisis situation and they have presented these from a company that, what you can do is that families that have extra drugs, or if any kind of drug for that matter, you just take this particular packet and you rip the top off, you put whatever the pills or drugs in there, and you add water to it and it neutralizes the whole thing and you dispose of it. And they've done that for families and some counties have this available in their sheriff's department for anybody to come in. And if you have old drugs in your cabinet or something like that, you can, you can, it's a good way to dispose of those things without flushing them and all the rest of that stuff. Briefly, I just want to encourage everybody here or on our board, and for that matter on our staff, to be able to attend one of these conferences because it is certainly worthwhile. The topics that you discuss are just about every topic you can imagine. I was telling Commissioner Gibbon that we covered topics from importing beach sand from another country to help the erosion in Mississippi, down to nuclear power plants and from the algae that affecting some of our interior lakes to trees. It's a wide variety of things. The other thing that if, I may run out of time here, but the other thing that impressed me is the number of counties that have engaged in outside strategic planning for their future and how that has guided their direction on what they wanted to do. And we really haven't taken any time to speak of, outside of our commission meetings, to do strategic planning. Where we look at ourselves and we look at our growth, we look at where the growth is, we look at what, where we are going. And it seems to me that we're in a reaction mode to whatever comes in front of us, we react to, regardless of what it was. So with the, with the situations that we have with courtrooms, with jails, with planning, with zoning, with encroachment, and I refer all of you to the report that our Director of Equalization sent us about the growth situation. I think we need to take the time and on a separate agenda and meet, as the one county in North Dakota, for example, they take every year, they set aside and they have a strategic plan and they review, but they spend at least two full days just amongst the commissioners on one day and the department heads on another. And it is not cheap. The planning things that they have done have ranged from $5,000 to $7,000. And there are many companies that are out there. I interviewed one that is, does this commercially and that was about $12,000, but I won't bore you with that one. I'll give you the information on that. The other thing that I wanted to impress upon you was, the motto of this year's county was stronger counties is stronger America. And NACO really concentrates on counties of smaller size. I would say that we're probably one of the medium-sized counties that are there. And South Dakota had a delegation representing about five different counties. We had an auditor, we had a treasurer, we had a register of deeds, and we had commissioners as well. So we did put money aside, as you remember, Senator, our Commissioner Gillespie attended two of these conferences and I would hope that some of you would as well. There's another provision in here which I will challenge all of you to take, is the iCivics program. I think everybody should try this. You try, you tee up the ECA, our NACO website and then you are a commissioner and then play the iCivics game. It's something that a lot of high schools have done. I think I've had several schools. I think Lennox has done it a couple of times. And you will see what kind of administrator you can be. There was a great amount of talk on the veterans and how we enhance the VA and the veterans to get them into housing and also the veterans that are in need of help because of their drug situation. There is a program coming out where NACO is going to work with creating something because people don't know what counties do. They have no idea on the amount of responsibilities that county has. So NACO is coming out and they're going to have a fellowship program in which they're going to take selected congressmen and they're going to give them fellowships and they're going to drag them around the countryside, all over, so they can see the diversity of what county government has to do. That's one of the areas they're working on. The second one is they're working on things that you can put on your particular website, listing all of your responsibilities, just all of them, and then, you know, what monies that you have to be able to cover those. The second thing, our third thing is, they're writing a book on county government which will be available for every county to have. We can dispense that, we can make use of however we want to with it, but it gives you the little history of county government, where it came from, how it started back in 1647, back when the Mayflower was here. That was the county, original county situation that occurred. The other part, we have had very much, I'm proud of this fact, that we have had several of our department heads have taken the leadership program. And if you haven't engaged in that commissioners, that's not a bad program to take. It's very good. It's kind of time intensive. I think we've had Sheri, Todd, John, you've taken it. Who else? We have had several in, in, in our, and our highway superintendent has taken it. But now it has broadened out, not only from the standpoint of you're a department head, but now it all will broaden out on a commissioners can, can take that. And I've got that information for you. I'll be happy to give you that. Overall, I want to leave you with this. We spent time with the, we had great speakers. Whether, whatever political stripe you are, however you feel about it, we had, the Vice President was there and talked about her beginnings were in county government. Did a, I think, a very good job explaining how she views county government and her opinion of it. We had Secretary of Transportation Buttigieg was there, and as you know, he's the mayor, but he started in county government. The Secretary of HUD was there and she started in county government. So it was an amazing thing to see how many of these people really got their start being a county commissioner. The secretary, or the, we were with the Secretary of the Treasury was there and we met the man who has designed the qualifications for this grant, this recovery grant that we have. And there was several questions asked and we're not alone in not being able to find adequate projects that can, can fit within that one size fits all. Many, many ideas on how other counties have adopted that. I won't bore you with that this morning, but I just want to emphasize the fact that we're worried sometimes. And Sheri, I'm not picking on you, but you're always worried about whether or not a project will meet the qualifications. And if we do this, are we ever going to be liable? Well, they have a safety check now that you can run your project to there to see whether it passes the litmus test. So I mean, overall, great experience, great amount of knowledge. I've got all the resolutions that I have with you and I'd share those with you. Some are highly controversial. I mean, you get into some pretty good discussions. They're very professional. And, but I mean, from, from what is important to Montana, Idaho, Utah is not that important in Ohio, in Illinois, in Indiana, or in Texas, or the Gulf Coast, or wherever. So thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair.
Thank you Commissioner. Any other commissioners have a report this morning? If not, we'll move on to regular business.
This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota. Rezoning the property legally described as Lot 3, Hoffman's addition, southwest quarter, southwest quarter, Section 31, Township 100 North, right 50 West from the A1 agr, from the A1 agricultural district to the I-1 light industrial district and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. Location is 27284 470th Avenue.
The applicant did submit a concept plan with the application. The applicant intends to construct an approximately 11,404 square foot building to be utilized for contractor shops. As was noted, the planning commission did recommend approval of this unanimously, as well as staff did recommend approval of this application. You have scheduled the second reading for this application at your July 29 meeting. Now with that, we'd have to answer your questions that you have for staff regarding this item.
What's your plan to put in there Toby?
The applicant owns a business, a construction business. I believe it's a fencing business that he intends to operate out of it. There would be space for additional rental, but he said that's not his primary means. His primary means is just for his own business at this time.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I entertain a, well, it's just our first reading, isn't it?
Yes.
All right. Sorry about that. If there aren't any other questions, then we'll move on to item two.
Good morning. So I'm here to, item number two is to request permission to do a formal bid letting on the dirt work for the egg buildings at the new 4H grounds.
All right. Heard the request. It's her motion? Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
John, is that to get done this year yet?
Yes, that would be our intention.
Okay. So they're going to peel the dirt work back and put some gravel down?
Yeah, make it, slope it so there'd be proper drainage and be building ready to hopefully go to bid early in the spring for at least the show ring building.
What's your next?
So number three is HVAC improvements to this facility. As part of the whole evaluation of the old courthouse, while we had the engineers here, I took the opportunity to discuss some issues that we've had with this side of the building. And we are now ready to hopefully reach out and get bids to make some of those improvements.
And that's just on this side of the building?
Correct. And this were, these were items that I did have included in my budget, the 2020 budget. And I'm going to have them break it out and it's like eight different small projects and I will pick and choose if items turn out to be more expensive than what we had requested in the budget numbers.
So you don't need anything from us today?
I just need permission to actually request quotes.
Okay.
John, do you think that some of the HVAC improvements will also mitigate COVID? And if so, if the answer is yes, does that mean that we could possibly use some COVID funds from the federal government to assist with this project?
I guess I'd have to look into it if it would be a COVID improvement. We pretty much did that type of project last year. It's mostly just a comfort level thing and also to bring temperatures down in server rooms and radio rooms and communication rooms and then the stairwells. But you know, I suppose the stairwells with, to improve the air quality, that would probably maybe justify some of that, maybe. You know, part of what Jim said with the litmus test, I would have to see if that would even qualify, you know, that part of it.
Sure. Thank you.
Heard the request.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you. Good morning Terry.
Good morning. This morning I had before, I'll give you a brief background on what I'm looking for here. So next year's pave project is, is scheduled to be County Road 152 from Norway Center to Hudson and County Road 143 from 152 down to Highway 46, which is the ethanol plant road. So we're having some issues with severe rutting and a lot of mushed out spots on those, especially on 143. And we have some, they're not as severe on 152. So, and I guess what we're looking to do, we brought the engineers down there and had them look at it and we, we feel that we need to do further testing. Because probably about six years ago, we started to, the county itself, we're in forces on 1, 143. We took and ground out some of those spots and we put a pave, a patch on top of those ourselves. Well, we're six years later and those spots are coming back through again. So it'd be my recommendation to do some further testing. Basically, it's going to be ground penetrating radar to, to decide what, what process we go forward from here. Now, in doing this, you know, we have several options with this. We're looking at cold-in-place recycling. But with that, we need, we need a certain depth of asphalt because this is a rather large, heavy train of equipment that goes over this. And if we don't have the depth of asphalt to, to hold that, then we'll be breaking through the remaining asphalt. The next one would be to do a full-depth reclaim on this. And if we're going to do that, then I think we ought to do some base stabilization in this as well. So, so what, what I'm looking for today is approval and authorize a chair to sign a quote for engineering services through American Engineering Testing to have, have this done. It's rather, rather spendy to do. It's about $57,000. But one thing, we're, instead of, you know, so 22 is east of Norway Center, Highway 11. So on 23, my paved project was going to be going west. Well, that, that stretch has some issues as well. So we, what we, what we're proposing to do is do the engineering on this entire stretch of 152 over to County Road 117, seeing the hopes of, you know, maybe not having to do it all next year if, if whatever we're going to do. So, any questions?
Well Terry, if you don't do that, you'll just continue to try to fix something, but it'll be a Band-Aid and then a few years later, you're right back where we were today.
Correct. So, so the other option is not do this and then we would just do a mill and an overlay. But then, you know, it's going to be five, seven, eight years later, those, those issues are going to be coming back through on a new map. So, and, you know, and, and having, as Commissioner Gibbon and I, we had a meeting here probably a month ago with the DOT regarding the Highway 46 rebuild project. They're not saying it's coming out right yet, but basically it's going to be, they're going to detour the traffic on our road for the ethanol plant. So we're going to have all that additional traffic for two years on some of these sections. So, and again, you know, timing on this, hopefully they would get down here in the next month. It'll take them some while to do this. So what they're going to be doing, they're going to be doing the ground penetrating radar. They got 38 penetrate, penetrate, standard penetration testing bores to a depth of six feet. Basically, that's going to go through the asphalt, your base and in your subgrade to see if there's subgrade issues. They also have 80 pavement cores to a depth of six inches, again, testing asphalt. And some of this testing on this quote may not be an option. If, if the cold-in-place recycling isn't an option to us, then those costs will not be done on this quote. Because if we're going to do like a full-depth reclaim on this, then, then this quote is going to be a little cheaper than what, what they had in the quote. But we won't know that until they have the ground penetrating radar done. So.
It seems like good business and fiscal management to get that done and find out what you got and try to repair it and take care of it.
Yeah. So a total is going to be about 19 miles that we're going to be having done for this, for this money.
Do you need to reroute traffic for a while then or not?
No, this, this here will be continually moving, except for the boring that they'll do. And again, I think they'll have their own flagmen out there. We might have to provide depending on where they are in the hills. Some flagging, but.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Terry? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll so move, Madam Chair. Second.
Thank you. Have a motion. And a second, any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Morning Cherry.
Good morning. So we're having convention this year in Rapid City on September 14th. That falls on a commission meeting. So I've given you a couple of options on what we can do. We can reschedule the meeting till the 15th. That meeting that we're looking at is also a pay meeting, so. Or we can reschedule it till the 21st, or we can cancel it altogether. I just need to know what you would like to do. And then the second part of this is, is everybody going to convention?
I've got it blocked off. Why don't?
I would say reschedule to the 21st, but I don't know.
Yeah, why don't we just swap it out with the 21st?
Does that affect payroll then, Cherry at all?
You know what though? That's our bus tour.
Yeah. Well, see, and what we were thinking is with the bus tour is we could come in. The biggest thing about canceling this meeting is we have a claim meeting that week. So if we come in, we approve claims and we can leave with the bus tour from here.
We just do that at 8:30? The bus is at 9?
Yeah. We could, yeah.
So move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All right. So then currently for asset tracking, I mean, as you know, we're going through a computer software upgrade. Right now, our asset tracking, everything that we buy over a hundred dollars, we put into the software. We put an asset tag on it and then we track it through the software. What I'd like to do is I'd like to change that to where we track it in our software when it's over $5,000 and then have the department heads on a spreadsheet track like their calculators and their things from 100 to 4,999 and over a year life expectancy. They track it and then they turn that into the auditor at the, after the first week, after December 31st every year. We do have to track the assets. I just don't like tracking them on the computer because we're buying asset tags, which are expensive, to track calculators, which are not. So I kind of just wanted to change the policy on how we handle that.
Does the board have any questions?
Do you recommend it? Like it?
I do. Well, and when, with Gassby accounting, they usually only have you track assets over $5,000. And we don't depreciate them at this point, but if we do, right now, we send out 500 pages of assets for everybody in the departments to track, chairs, calculators, whatever. That would eliminate that. They would keep, I have a spreadsheet that they would keep a rolling inventory of what they've got that meets that criteria.
In each individual office?
Yep. Rather than putting it on the auditor to track them down.
As you said here, currently, it's pretty cumbersome and expensive.
It is. Yeah. It, we, it's a time-consuming for tracking it. And with the software that we've got coming and the changes that we're going to do with the software, it's going to become more of a burden.
Do the, do the other department heads have access to that tracking software then, where they can enter their own?
They, they would not. Nope. But what, that's why we would have a spreadsheet and they would just keep it on the spreadsheet. And the, the smaller assets, the reason why we And the, the smaller assets, the reason why we keep track of that is if there was a disaster, there was a county where a tornado came through, the auditor had an inventory of everything they had, they just handed it to the insurance company and they covered it, so. I think just keeping it on the computer system, because then you have to go through and you have to surplus it and all that. And with this would take away all the surplus, you know, the calculators and the chairs and the, you know.
You need as much staff if you implement this?
Yes, I already cut down one of my staff. I'm just trying, if I can eliminate some of these things that we have to do, where they can be distributed through the other departments, it helps with our workload, so.
Do you need a motion?
Well, you've heard the request, is there a motion?
I'll move for that approval.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, Sean, go ahead.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
We'll move on to item seven.
On July sixth, I asked all of you to adopt a resolution establishing publishing fees. There was a typo in the attached resolution that you adopted. And that typo had the the publication fee for vacation of highways and plats and right-ofways, and the publication fees for road districts equaling that of all the other publication fees that only published once, whereas those two published twice. Currently, there is already a fee for vacating, vacations at two fifty. And I didn't want to change that with this resolution. And I wanted the road district, which there was no fee, to just match what was already being done for the vacation, since it was it was aligning with what our costs were looking like when I was looking at those costs with our new five newspaper fees. So I would ask you to rescind that resolution and adopt this resolution with the correction, if you would, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Motion carries, item eight?
So to give an update on the plating of the south twenty acres of Highway Shop parcel, this was requested to be placed on today's agenda to surplus. And since we're unable to do that, I wanted to give you all an update on that. Toby Brown is working with Bill Golden on the housing eligibility history of that. And I am working currently with IMAG on plating this, which I hear will have to be approved by the City of Canton, which has the subdivision authority over that. And then, of course, Toby is here to answer any questions about that. He knows a lot more about it than me. I have not received any fee estimates from IMAG yet. I did reach out to them last week, and haven't heard back from Todd, who is their surveyor.
All right, any questions?
So Toby, is there a housing eligibility on that thing?
Bill and I are researching it. There was some dispute at the time that it was purchased, so we're researching it.
Well, even if there isn't one, can we just create one?
Uh, no.
Why not?
Because they're assigned with the ordinance.
You could rezone it, but that's not what we're going to do. But I'll, I'll visit with you about that. Was part of that discussion and the dispute when it happened, so.
All right, any other questions?
With that, Madam Chair, I'll move to adjourn.
Oh, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, just everybody, we're having a budget work session next week, which would not be a normal meeting for us. But we are meeting next week at eight-thirty on the twentieth.
Thanks for coming, one and all.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. Have a good day. Thanks for the socks.
I expect to see everybody put those on with the.